This is the U.S. Public Affairs, or correction, uh, public hearing microphone, can I get audio check?
Your audio is good, thank you.
Moderator, very good on your end to presume?
We are good, you are ready to present whenever.
Okay. This is Ben Connors again. I don't know what I was saying. Treaty rights. So. For me, I, you know, I keep coming back to treaty rights, right? Because it's all the way it was taught, or the way I learned. It was so integral to be to have those abilities in order to be Indian. When those, when those rights were fought for, it was actually where we were less than human. So the ability to continue to practice those is it just, you know, trying to really hammer home how important it does, it is for us to continue these and to have this ability. We live in, you know, it's circle of life, right? Everything is in symbiosis, right? From the air we breathe, the water we drink, the plants and animals, we share this, this wonderful world with, you know, all the way down to the tiniest macroinvertebrate. It is all dependent on its neighbor. And so are we, we're just part of that. Right? We're not above it. To try to break it apart and say we're only affecting this proportion is nonsense. Because any effect on the circle is going to affect every piece of that, including us, right? We need to protect it all. Our home, our home at River, super important to us. It helps to find who we are. And then like I said, you know, everything depending on each other. This we understand as a people and we have understood for generations. Traditionally ecological knowledge is a science. Okay, it is a science. It's, and your acquiescence to a pipelines proposal here is based on Western science. Okay, Western science is highly dependent on experimentation and gathering data. Okay, so experimenting with our homeland is not something we should allow, right? Why would we let? Why would we think about about letting about it being a maybe, right? If there's, if there's anything that's a maybe, it shouldn't be considered. It, you know, if there's a chance that that little microinvertebrate in, in the water suffers and goes away, it's going to affect everything, everything above it. Okay, there are fish, there walleye fry that depend on that little animal. There are plants that be that, that macroinvertebrate's dead body to grow, right? And if in the upper watershed, the negative effects, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna continue to grow and continue to get better because big things are made up of little things, right? Don't don't wait for Western science to be able to gather that information and, and create the data. Because by the time we wait that long, it may be too late. We may not be able to come back and fix it, right? And so this, you know, I was asked to talk about specific areas. For me, it's hard to talk about a specific area on the reservation because I think they're all, again, they're all related, everything's related, we're all related, right? But for me and my family, I want to talk about a place called Bad River Falls. It's not waterfall per se, it's a series of, it's a shallow place in the river. A series of small shelves, three, four foot shelves and fish every spring travel beyond this area to spawn, right? Up closer to the area we're talking about to spawn. We go there in the spring to spearfish, to, you know, harvest and, and preserve them for, to feed ourselves throughout the rest of the year. Growing up are at that area, okay? Again, tied to a location, right? Just being there with my elders, listening to them talk and, and tell stories and laugh. Our humor is what is part of what makes us who we are, you know, like we heard about some good knockers a minute ago, right? That's part of who we are. Okay, so damaging a portion of the watershed and taking away that possibility for next generations is damaging our people as a whole. Okay, we can't do that. We, you know, trust to that traditional ecological knowledge. It's been there for millennia. And it knows, understands that those fish are going through that area. Because there's something up there they need, right? When they spawn, their eggs come out and there's something up there they need. Walleye fry are tiny, so whatever they need is tiny, right? A tiny effect, a tiny negative effect can have huge implications. And let's not wait to gather data to find out, oops, you know, we did it wrong. You know, I touched a little bit on, you know, I don't want to be the next, I don't want to be the last, right? I don't want my kids to be the last. My ancestors fought for me and they didn't know me, right? Their fight was for treaty rights. I believe our responsibility in our fight today is for our land. I believe that's why we're here. And I definitely want my grandkids to have the same experiences I had. So yeah, I totally got lost. Now you're close to what I wrote. I think I'm just, I'm going to finish with that, right? Trust in in the traditional ecological knowledge, trust in the millennia. And I understand don't experiment with Western science, don't trust to have truths and, and predictions. Because there is a history there that we should be listening to and following. That was really helping keep it in stack, right?
We're June in Dinoe Maqinaduk. Okeemakwe Indigenous Akas, April Stone, Jaganash, Chinwina Kazo, Makwanindudam, Gasha Gago, Wanchakamindumjepa, Mushkizi Binda. Ninnanimandana, Shinio Gipunikis, Minewa, Niwep, Nidjanisak, Nimbapake, Maket, Makakoke. My English name is April Stone and my Ojibwe name is Okeemakwe, I'm Bear Clan. I have four children. And I live at Bad River, very southeastern corner of the reservation between Gurnee and Melon, Wisconsin. And I'm a Black Ash basket maker. And thank you for inviting me today and being here to speak on behalf of my home. I want to add a little bit of context in the beginning and hopefully tie it all in at the end. So for myself, I was not based on the reservation. I was raised in the border town of Ashland. My father's from the reservation, but we spent a lot of time there visiting relatives and family and I wasn't brought up with a lot of my culture, although I knew it existed. And it was something that I had always searched for and it wasn't until I was an older, with a young woman graduating from high school that I realized that something was missing from my life. And what was missing was, was the place that I called home. I really didn't have that. It wasn't, teachings, stories weren't necessarily shared by my father because he wasn't shared those things by his parents, although my grandparents were very strong with it. And so when I embarked on that journey as, as a young woman in my early twenties, when I started having children, that's when I realized what will I teach my children? What will I feed my children? So those were my, my two, my two questions that I had as a, as a young mother, young woman. And where that took me then was to my home at Bad River. I knew that I wanted to raise my children in a certain way. And I knew that it had to be in a certain place. And I, and I look at that as just sort of like innate thought. I think it was always there. I just didn't, I was, and I was just following it. And so I live for the past 28 years, I've spent my, my life on the very southeastern corner of the reservation, close to the Tyler Forks and close to the Potato River. I raised my children with the forests and our surrounding and I want to say surrounding home is actually, you know, thousands of acres, but my children had the opportunity to run and play and that was actually their first school. They were homeschooled and they were taught how to look at the trees, what their names were, they were taught the plants and what their names were. They played in the rivers and creeks and in the streams. We built our home and we lived without running in water and electricity on purpose for many years. Because I wanted them to understand how good we had it, living that way. And I wanted them to appreciate what they were going to have then later on in their life. So I literally felt that in order for them to be good stewards of the land in their future, that they needed to have an understanding of the place that was their home as children growing up. And so that was a big part of what drove my, my decision to live where we lived and how we lived. And we gathered and harvested many, many things from the land. And as, as a Black Ash basket maker and as a weaver, that was another draw for, for me in that area. Starting to get married, just to backtrack a little, I thought to myself, where could, where could I live? And I was drawn to the southern edge of the reservation because it is a totally different ecosystem than that of the northern side of the reservation, along Highway Two where most of the communities live. That's mostly clay and aspen today. But on the southern, southern boundaries, it's a different, it's, it's different, it's, the topography is different. I actually versus what doesn't necessarily happen when I'm driving down Birch Hill. It's a very different weather down the bottom of the hill. So the weather's different, the topography is different, the drainage is different. And in exploring a lot of those places on the southern edge, you know, we, we had come across creeks and, and all kinds of plants and artesian wells and areas that I didn't even know were there. We would play and harvest horsetail and dried mullested stock by Wings Creek, which there was an artesian well flowing out of the ground there. And actually, there were stories that were shared with me about logging that used to happen in that area way back when and there was like a cup and a kettle there so you could drink some water. And we actually went down there and we, we found those kettles that were, that were left there from, from previous generations of men logging. We would go over to the Tyler Forks, there's Black Ash Swamp there. And for the first 15 years of, of making baskets, I would harvest trees from that spot. The next to the Tyler Forks, we would swim in the Potato River, off the Potato River Bridge, we would fish off Elmhoist. I know it's a high bridge, but we still did it anyway. We would harvest, we would trap beaver in the winter over in the very southeastern corner of the reservation, both on and off with, with, in relation to the people who we had authority to harvest beaver on their property such as the offsteads or thueses. So, you know, we had established relationships with the local farmers at Cozy Valley. And we snared rabbits. We did all kinds of things, hunted deer. And, you know, that was just kind of like our little, our little corner of the world. And it just wasn't there. We would follow the roads all the way up through the reservation, up to the lake. And, you know, we'd, we'd swim in the big lake, we'd set net in the big lake. We catch smelt in the big lake and in the creeks flowing into the lake. We would gather waupato on the sides of the, of the banks. We would harvest nettles in the lowlands next to the rivers. And our own backyard was a sugar bush. And when we decided to live there, we made that decision in February. So when everything's in its dormant stage, you kind of can't see what health of the terrain is or what's growing there. But I did go to school for natural resource management. So even though there, there was no leaves on, on the, on the trees, I knew what the soil type was going to be like based on the trees that grew in the forests on, on the land that I leased, which was basswood and and yellow birch and white birch and maples, a lot of maples, which was why I chose that land as my lease land. So, um, like I said, for 28 years, I've been living there and that's where I raised my children. My children had access to hunt, fish and gather right alongside of us and that's how we brought them up and that's how we chose to bring them up. Because that was, I felt having those kinds of skills would help them to be able to survive and thrive also moving forward in their lives. I knew that they were going to have very different future than what I had or what my parents had. So I needed to know that they knew how to find water, build a shelter, tan hides, harvest wild foods, craft and do all kinds of cultural activities. That was very important for me to make sure to pass on to them. And like I said, I wasn't shown those things or taught those things growing up, so I had to actually read, learn, do, and then so that I could share that. And that's pretty much what I've made my life doing. And now as 54 years of age, I step into another role and that is a role of responsibility. By the late Paulus, he said, "Your gift is the same as your responsibility, is the same as your burden." He said, "They, they mean pretty much all the same thing." And so in carrying what I have to carry forward, part of that is working to protect and know what is there on the landscape in the first place. And so I, and I take that role very seriously. It is my, it is not just my, my life. Personally, it is also my career as a basket maker and educator. I travel around at all the different reservations and different schools in Wisconsin and Minnesota. And I teach basket making and weaving skills to others as a form of healing and empowerment and connecting, reconnecting with the landscape and with the natural materials that grow. And so that is also why it's very important to protect what we have in our home because in, in my home, on my reservation and in ceded territory is where I harvest all of my materials that I use when I make my, my baskets and all the materials that people use when they, when they work with me or when I work with them. And I have traveled not just in the tri-state area, but both nationally and internationally because of, because of where I am in my career as a basket maker. So I have a lot of places on the reservation that I go and harvest. Some of the materials that I use when I work and some of my favorite places are the Tyler Forks. Which is, like I said, very close to my home on the southeastern corner of the reservation. And also harvesting over by the Marango River and Silver Creek for basswood and horsetail and grapevine and all kinds of other, of other things. So many people here today have mentioned the plants and the animals that have been used and that list is not exhaustive. It goes on and on and on. And so for me, it's effect, I started with knowing what I needed to right? I, I think what I was saying was I look at it as kind of like a domino effect. I was just one person, not really brought up in my homeland, found my way back to that, which is huge. It touched me in such a way that it then I was able to share that with my children and not just my children. It went on to be shared with many, many other people, thousands and thousands of people. And then to undertake the journey of reconnecting with those plants and trees in certain ways so as to harvest and process and then make, create those items that our ancestors once used and that we will continue to use moving forward. It's actually a really huge thing and, and an important aspect as far as healing goes and reclamation and just having that information back, it's a responsibility that I take very seriously. And so if anything were to happen to those plant and tree communities where they currently live and reside as, as living beings, you know, that would be detrimental and it would have great impacts in those places, but also for what that means for, for us who use those things. You know, if, if the food isn't healthy, how can we, how can we harvest it? How can we eat it? If, if the trees aren't healthy, if the grasses aren't healthy, how can we harvest them and how can we use them? What happens to that? And as was touched on earlier, TEK, traditional ecological knowledge, that's, that's where this is all stemming from. And it is very important thing to, to carry forward. So I guess, I guess that's, that's just what I wanted to share with you today is that, um, I, I've been living out there in the southeastern corner of the reservation for half of my life. And it's a very beautiful, beautiful place and I would hate to see anything happen to it. And I would hate to see any kind of decision-making alter in such a great way so as to not make it very livable.
We do Indinoe, Indinoe Maqinaduk, Bobby Wash, Indigenous Akas, Mapwe, Indodam, Mushkizi Binda, Nidjepa. So my other name is Phil Amina Quebec. And I'm a doctor of public health student and fellow at Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. I'm also a tribal member. Most importantly, I'm the granddaughter of Kiki Wenique, the daughter of Tabas Sanikwado and the mother of Ozawa Makuns and Nena Sobanesik. So my, my grandmother was born and raised in Odana. And like many of our ancestors, she had to leave in the 1930s because the environmental destruction of our reservation left our community impoverished. I grew up off the reservation. I was born in Chicago and then grew up in Minneapolis. Like tens of thousands of Bad River tribal members and descendants. And, you know, I represent the perspective of, of our people who, who grew up off the reservation with very limited experiences of exercising treaty rights. My early, my early relationship to the Bad River Reservation was through the stories that my grandmother told me. So when she was a little girl, Odana was a bustling town. It had an opera house and a movie activities. And so her father, my great grandfather, would send all the kids to the mouth of the reservation unobserved and, and these kids would just spend their whole summer out on the mouth of the Bad River. And this is, you know, this is where they were, they were fishing and hunting and harvesting wild rice and connecting with the place. And my grandmother, because of that, she was very deeply connected to, to our homeland. And it was, it was profoundly disturbing to her that she, you know, she, that, that bond was severed when she was a, when she was a but, um, she, you know, she taught me about that and she, she made me love the place, even though, you know, I only, I only knew it through her eyes. And I'm going to tell you that my relatives who suffered greatly from the loss of connection to our lands and the loss of connection to our people. So I have a diagnosis of several mental health disorders and have survived many episodes of suicidality. Now, as a student of public health, I'm studying suicidality and the experience of American Indian and Alaska Native people, why our suicide mortality rates are many times higher than our, our non-Indigenous relatives. So I know that in Wisconsin, our suicide rates of young people is twice or three times higher than that of non-Indigenous, non-Indian people. And what this tells me is that Western systems of health have proven ineffective for us. While the research on indigenous methodologies is still nascent, like we, we really need to develop the evidence base around this. I have only found lasting relief in establishing connections to Anishinaabe, A'king, to the Bad River Reservation, to our lands, to our waters in the same manner as my ancestors did. So I came home in about 2011. And I was, I was really suffering. And what I, what I did is I put myself out on a fast at the mouth of the Bad River. And stayed out there for four days without food or water. And during and coyotes and eagles and all these other different more than human beings that, that came out and offered medicine provided me with healing. I've also fasted at the cliffs overlooking the Bad River on the south end of the reservation, fairly close to the meander. You know, I've, I've, I've gone out when I felt so desolate and alone and, and really hurting to the Anishan sleaze to pick medicine and, and found the wolf tracks that were that were pack tracks. Is that a bad sound? Okay. I've been hunting deer with my, with my daughter on the south end of the reservation and, and tracking, you know, tracking deer, finding the massive amount of wolf tracks on the south end of the reservation. And although I haven't yet, I look forward to spearing, learning how to spear at the falls and, and harvesting fish there. Also, I, I, you know, setting that at the mouth of the Bad River. And what I can tell you about these experiences, picking medicines, harvesting manoman on the reservation, is that it provides a connection both to my community members, to our ancestors, to the future and to all the more human beings that we share our, our land with. You know, the otters, the wolves, the eagles, osprey, beavers, bears, porcupines, kind songbirds, deer, manoman, medicine plants. Being with them is what we're supposed to be as Anishinaabe people. And, and just as they offer our medicine, the medicine to us in order to have a good life, in order to eat well and, and feel good, we have a responsibility to them, to protect them and to make sure that their future is solid, is strong. we have a responsibility to them, to protect them and to make sure that their future is is solid, is strong. My friend April talked about safety and that's what safety is for us. It's not simply about my property rights, my ability to enjoy my property, but it's about the right of the of the entire ecosystem to thrive. Without that, our health as Indian people is 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 diminished and it's over. Our existence is over. But you know what? What I would like to, you know, what I'd like to say to to conclude is that um Maingan is is so important to the to the health and safety and lives of Anishinaabe people. Um Maingan wolves are a a keystone aspect of our ecosystem because they uh they protect our deer population. They ensure that our our medicines are healthy and strong by maintaining balance. And additional corridors within our territory are very detrimental to Maingan. Uh they they are protected on the reservation to a certain extent, but they they don't know or understand the the political boundaries that we set as as human beings. And so the um you know, the offers that they're they're their their travels, they have responsibilities that are off the reservation boundaries and not reservation lines. And creating creating additional opportunities for the um poaching of Maingan is is very detrimental to um to our people. Uh so I, you know, I think I think that's all I want to say today. I wanna I wanna thank you and you know, as someone who who has to make decisions, I I don't envy your position. You know, I I I understand. I understand that um this is this is difficult, but um I also know that you have courage and um and that you are listening and and we're I'm very grateful for your um for the opportunity to talk to you and share with you today.
If you hear a bear um while I'm speaking, don't be alarmed. It's just my belly. Give me a second here. Have to put these on. See what I'm doing, what I'm talking about. Well, when a bourgeois into a maggot, we got a gavel, we can dish it. Uh sky, we can see into them. We should be in. Nick up a material and guy a day one a plate and go. That will get translated to, I think, later on. So my taxpaying name is Edith Leo, so. Um I don't know if I'm gonna pay those taxes this year, but yeah, I'm still waiting for my tax person to figure that out. In this short time that I have, I want to emphasize the importance of our connection to the place called Bad River. You may be familiar with living somewhere in your life that was a significant place and then you moved. And that place became significant and you may have moved again. And that place became significant and so on and so forward until you came to the place where you're at today. This may be a significant place to you or it may not be. We, the people at Mushki City, can remember coming from the east coast near the Great Salt Water. We moved because our very existence would be threatened, so much so that we would be left with nothing. No people, no language, no songs, no stories, no understanding of even the story of creation. No place in the world. Near annihilation came to those who stayed. Prophets came to tell us though of the coming of a light skin us if we stayed. They told us that for us to survive and thrive, we would have to move several times to the west. The prophets described each place that we would travel to. There would be seven stopping places. We would find those places and many would stay at each of those places and their descendants are still there today. Others would continue to move west in search of our final stopping place. We don't know how long we traveled west. Archaeologists put their theories forward as though they are factual. But the fact is, we know we began before the light skinned race arrived. And it was several generations until we made first contact. How long a generation lived back then is not the same as today. When my mother was ten years old in nineteen thirty nine, she remembered hundreds of elderly people in her community. Some were so old, nobody knew how old they truly were. The oldest recorded lived to be a hundred and eighty seven years old. And she is buried next to Chief Buffalo on Madeline Island. Chief Tagwagane had a village in the city of Ashland along the creek that meanders through the city near Northland College. He held on to a hand hammered copper plate of his family for each generation that they had lived in the area since the Great Migration from the shores of the Great Salt Water. I believe there were fourteen generations etched on the plate when he showed it to a white person. But they automatically assumed that each generation was only fifty some years old at most. Each was more than likely ninety to a hundred and fifty years old. Placing his family at one thousand two hundred and sixty years to two thousand one hundred years located in Mushki City being area from the east. He had yet to place his generation on the plate. A man with a hat was shown four generations before his. But it is uncertain where his family was at that time. It was documented. To be on the plate, they had to be somewhere near copper country. The first sign of white people was prior to sixteen fifty eight when Radisson and Grossi came to Shuamigan Bay. Chief Tagwagane buried the plate in an undisclosed location on the Bad River Reservation before he died. River is in what was told to us in those prophecies, which was that our final stopping place would be in a place where food grows on top of the water. The food is manure, the good seed widely known as wild rice. Jimmy Senior would be issued an allotment after his son-in-law, Omishinaway, signed the Treaty of eighteen fifty four as the second chief called the disciple in English. Jimmy Senior anglicized his original name of Chimaits for the allotment. The allotment system derives from England, the ultimate colonizers of America. This, I want to say too, that I'm very so proud of our tribal members who started out saying in this, you know, introducing themselves in the language. I say English is the language of Americas, but it's not that what you heard is the original language here. Through the Treaty of eighteen fifty four, not through the Dawes Act of eighteen eighty six that came thirty years later. Omishinaway was married to Margaret James, also known as Maggie James. They had a son named Oguma Ants, young chief, who later took the name of George Messenger. He would inherit chieftainship from Omishinaway and would be the last of the original chiefs from the chieftainship era before the nineteen thirty six um Indian Reorganization Act. Um Messenger is a better anglicized version of his his father's name, the disciple. Omishinaway's close friend and confidant was Chief Adaw Gijic, called Both Sides of the Sky in English. He signed the Treaty of eighteen forty six. Adaw Gijic's chieftainship would be passed to his son. Chief Gitchi, when when a bushel. Gitchi, a winnable show would have a daughter called Nijo Dance, who would later marry George Messenger, Oguma Ants. They would have one daughter before Nijo Dance would pass away as a young mother. Her name is Mary Messenger, George Messenger's only biological child. Mary Messenger would later marry Peter Whoel. And among their children, they would have George and Martha. Martha would wed Frances and have two daughters named Edith and Mary. Edith would marry Siaki Liosso from American Samoa. And among their seven children, they would have a daughter named Edith, who is me. Among George's children, him and his wife Burnett would have a daughter named Patricia. Would marry Lawrence Blanchard and have us on named Robert Blanchard, who is our current tribal chairman, council chairman. Martha's other daughter, Mary would marry Eugene Big Boy. And among their children, they would have a son, Peter, who also serves on the Bad River Tribal Council today. Also on tribal council is my sister, Essie's oldest daughter, my niece Laura Miranda, another descendant of those Ogumaluk chiefs who signed treaties. Today, my brother is renovating our grandmother's house that was built on Chimaits's allotment next to the Kakagun River, where I grew up and continue to visit today. Hopefully, in the near future, I can build a house directly on the site where my Anikubijigun chimits once lived. That's just a heads up for that permit I might need. When my my brother is done with his renovation, our family will come together on our place in the world to have a big feast on that land that we still care for today. Our Jean-Gavin feast will include wild rags harvested from the Kakagun sluice, deer meat harvested harvested from the reservation, strawberries, berries and blueberries harvested from the sea territories, corn and other veggies grown and harvested in my army veteran brother Siaki's garden that he maintains on that land today. As always, before we eat, we will make a spirit dish that will contain a pinch of each of the foods in the feast and in Nojibway Moen, in the OJibway language, we will speak to our Anikupijigun our ancestors and we will call them all by name to join us in remembering our story, our home near the place where food grows on top of the water. My children and grandchildren and great nieces and nephews will be present to hear our story so that they can move it into the future. And now it will forever be documented in this proceeding. As a child, I would swim in the Kakagun River. As a teen, I would swim in the Mushki CB Bad River. As an elder, I continue to swim in Gitchi coming Lake Superior. Even though at the surface, the water was copper colored in the rivers, I remember when we would dive to the bottom of the river and open our eyes about a foot and a half below the bottom to see a crystal clear scene of fish swimming, leeches and turtles, an effect of our Dijon well water that I hope is considered in the groundwater modeling for the proposed project. Again, and Nigani Gabboue Quay, additional cost. I am leading woman or the woman who stands upright as to lead others. I hope that I can lead you all to understand the importance of our place in the world. Our Anikubijigun, our ancestors, ensured through the signing of those treaties that we would all have a place to safely live in peace. When our place in the world is threatened, which none of you may know what that feels like, we do not feel safe as promised. Our land is not the United States of America. It is not federal lands. It is tribal lands held in trust with the federal government to care for so that we can be safe and live in peace. The Bad River watershed and Ditchi coming Lake Superior, the place where we were promised to live safe from harm, the place we need to survive as a people and a unique culture, the place we love. I hope none of you will ever be threatened in your own home. It is not a feeling that anyone should ever have to experience. I hope none of you will ever have to beg to a panel just to live safely in our own home like I am doing here today. I don't think my ancestors intended for me to do this to it is a shame that I have to. Me which business now, yake. Thank you for listening to me. Despite everything that was done to take our language away, where our great grandparents were beaten if they spoke. I am so proud of our tribal membership today to be able to speak it here today. I just wanted to say that much. Me which meet you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
There you go. Good afternoon. As I said yesterday, I am Connie Sue Martin, uh one of the attorneys representing the band. I want to thank you Lieutenant Colonel Rudd and your staff, Ms. Money Star and Mr. Orne for your time and attention. I am the last witness to speak on behalf of the band. As I spoke about yesterday, EPA's role in this four oh one eight two process is to evaluate the band's objection and provide the Corps with its recommendations. It did so yesterday. The band strongly disagrees with EPA's recommendation. Its recommendations are not dispositive and are not entitled to more weight in this process than the bands. The EPA's recommendations here conflict with the recommendations it gave to the same district for the Polymet project, the Northmet Mine, following the objection of the Fondaluck Band. There, EPA recommended against issuing the permit. In that case, it was reissuing the permit to the North project based on remarkably similar circumstances as we find ourselves here, that no conditions could be imposed on the project sufficient to protect from mercury mobilization, methylation and export at levels that would exceed the band's water quality requirements, given the project design and discharges outside the Clean Water Act four oh four permitted activities. There, the Corps agreed. This is why there, the Fondaluck's band Fondaluck Band's water quality criteria for mercury to protect human health was not currently attained in waters within its reservation. That is the same as we have here, existing impairments and fish consumption advisories for mercury on the reservation. There, mercury concentrations in surface waters between the Northmit Northmit Project site and the Fondaluck Reservation were also greater than the Fondaluck Band's standards. Those are the same conditions as we have here, as Ms. Tillison's testimony established. Sampling data from both on and off the reservation, including USGS data, show mercury at sampling locations between the project disturbance area and the reservation boundary in concentrations as much as thirty six times greater than the band's water quality standards for mercury. There, mercury really mercury release from wetlands adjacent to the mine. There, mercury really, mercury released from wetlands adjacent to the mine site as a result of changes in the hydrology due to construction and operation of the mine is a significant potential source of mercury to the Saint Louis River watershed. Those same conditions are present here. Mercury releases from the wetlands in the project disturbance area and hydrologic changes due to the project are a significant source of mercury to the already impaired Bad River watershed. There are mercury releases into a far more hydrologically connected watershed with vastly more wetlands than were taken into consideration in the development of the permit application. More importantly, it's a significant source of mercury into a methylation-rich wetland environment. There, such mercury releases would exacerbate the ongoing exceedances of the Fondelac Band's water quality requirements. As Dr. Brand Fire and testified there and here, mercury releases from the project will exacerbate the ongoing exceedances of the Bad River Band's water quality standards. There, the available data and analyses supporting the four oh four permit and the four oh one certification were insufficient to allow the full evaluation of the mercury impacts from the project in terms of the area of wetlands affected and the effects of the font on the Fondelac Band's water quality requirements. Those are the same conditions as we have here, as Mr. Chiraboga's present presentation established yesterday. More accurate mapping shows that the landscape has far more wetlands than the older wetlands inventory data. More wetlands, greater hydrologic connection, and increased mercury methylating potential. Conclusions drawn in the state of Wisconsin's four oh one certification here were based on a drastic underrepresentation of hydrologic connections that is insufficient to allow the full evaluation of the mercury impacts from the projects in terms of the area of wetlands affected and the effects on water quality. Both Esteban Chiraboga and Dr. Brian Brand Fire and testified on behalf of the Fondelac Band, as they noted yesterday during their testimony here. The EPA and the Corps found their testimony then both credible and persuasive. The EPA's agency standards to situations that are so similar is arbitrary capricious. In fact, reviewing courts have uniformly agreed, calling such conduct a hallmark of arbitrary or capricious agency actions. Because the EPA's inconsistent applications of its four oh one eight-two standards to situations that are so similar is arbitrary and capricious. It is not entitled to the presumption of validity, and this recommendation that the permit be issued should be afforded little weight. The Corps also heard yesterday from the applicant, who has absolutely no role in this process under the four oh one eight-two. Other than to comply with the terms and conditions of any permit that might issue. Even if the project is critical energy infrastructure, the Corps must still comply with the substantive provisions of Section four oh one eight-two of the Clean Water Act. The band was not afforded the opportunity to review the new data that the applicant presented yesterday during its presentation. But, as the Corps heard this morning during our battle through Dr. Bratton and Mr. Payton, the applicant's testimony is not credible. The information and analysis in the band's will affect letter. The additional evidence you have heard through this hearing and the information you will receive between now and June thirteenth, when the public comment period closes, leads to only one conclusion. There are no conditions that can be imposed on the project assigned that will ensure that it doesn't violate the Bad River Band's water quality standards. You heard testimony during this hearing that the band's water quality standards are in place to protect human health, wildlife, and aquatic life. You heard eloquent testimony this morning in English and Ojibwe about the richness and the diversity of the band's reservation waters and the uses of those waters by band members across the reservation. These activities have been carried out by the band members on the band's homeland since time immemorial. The band's water quality standards were enacted specifically to protect the designated uses you heard about this morning. And to allow those activities that preserve the band's cultural heritage, including ceremonial uses, subsistence hunting, fishing, and harvesting for medicinal uses. The authority to assess whether a discharge violates water quality standards is a critical element of effectively enforcing those standards. And it is crucial for ensuring that this Section four oh one is properly implemented. The ability of the band to enforce its own more stringent water quality requirements is consistent with the legislative purpose and history of the Clean Water Act. In stating the overall goals of the act, Congress declared its policy to recognize, preserve, and protect the primary responsibilities and rights of states and tribes with TAS authority to prevent, reduce, and eliminate pollution of their waters. Legislative history of Section four oh one confirms terms that Congress intended to give states and tribes power for activities potentially affecting the state or tribe's water quality. The plain language of the Clean Water Act and the cases that have construed it provide that the band is the primary resource agency responsible for its water quality. And as response, it is reasonable for the Corps to rely on the band's determination of the effects of the project on its water quality. The band has established that discharges from the project will affect its water quality requirements and violate its water quality standards. The authority to make this determination is the band's alone. Neither the state of Wisconsin, the EPA, nor the Corps can second-guess the band's conclusions. The task the Corps is entrusted with under Section four oh one eight-two is to condition the Section four oh four permit as may be necessary to ensure compliance with applicable water quality requirements based upon the band's recommendation and the recommendation of the EPA and the additional evidence presented at this hearing. If the imposition of conditions cannot ensure compliance with the band's water quality standards, the Corps has no discretion. It shall not issue the license or permit. The two hundred and thirty-one conditions already imposed by the state in its four oh one certification won't ensure compliance with the band's water quality standards. As Ms. Strand testified, even when BMP's best management practices are perfectly constructed and implemented, they do not prevent the discharge of pollutants, including sediment and turbidity to downstream waters. They're not designed to prevent a hundred percent not designed for a hundred percent capture of sediment or turbidity. They will allow sediment and turbidity off the disturbed area into hydrologically connected waters and into the reservation in violation of Bad River Water Quality Standards. Ms. Thornburg testified that the BMPs for invasive species, non-local beings, will not protect against the discharge from construction equipment activities and movement of non-local beings to reservation waters in violation of the Bad River Band's water quality standards. The band's technical and expert witnesses testified that there are no conditions that could ensure compliance with the Bad River Band's water quality standards. As Esteban Chiraboga of Glyphwick demonstrated that the shortcomings of the existing hydrographic data underestimate the magnitude of the transport of contaminants from the proposed Line five reroute to the reservation boundary. The conclusions drawn by the regulatory agencies regarding the project's adherence to the Bad River Band's water quality standards are based on an incomplete understanding of site hydrology. The so-called conservative estimate of the fate and transport of pollutants by the applicant is neither conservative nor accurate. Discharges from the Line five reroute will reach the reservation waters and will violate the band's narrative and numeric criteria, its designated uses, and its anti-degradation standards. Mr. Payton from Right Water Engineers testified that the project will have effects on hydrology that the Corps does not appear to have considered, including near-term impacts during and immediately following construction, including increases in peak discharge magnitudes and volumes caused compounded by soil compaction caused by earthwork associated with the construction. Inadvertent releases from horizontal directional drilling is another impact. Long-term impacts from right-of-way maintenance, like brush hogging and other pipeline activities. Enbridge acknowledged changes in hydrology would occur. When they reach reservation waters, those changes are a violation of the band's water quality standards. These impacts on the hydrology of water body, body of bodies flowing to the reservation will be significant. Dr. Bratton from LimnoTech testified that the Line five project reconstruction, including over ten thousand linear feet of blasting and substantial excavation in areas of Artesian groundwater pressure, will negatively affect natural resources and beings on the Bad River Reservation and lands, adjacent lands such that permit conditions cannot be established to prevent harm. Finally, Dr. Brand Fire and testified that the Line five reroute project will impact the hydrology of substantial areas of wetlands in the headwaters of the Bad River and tributaries. And the area of wetland impact is not just in the right-of-way or the designated permit activity area because it is perpendicular to the hydrologic flow paths of extensive wetlands that control downstream flows and water quality. The twenty percent success criterion of downgrade gradient water table variation as proposed in the permit relative to upgradient means downgradient wetlands may be substantially wetter, drier, or more variable than natural conditions, all of which, as Dr. Brand Fire and testified yesterday, impact mercury methylation in different ways. Hydrological and biochemical changes to wetlands as a result of the Line five reroute will increase the amount of methylmercury produced in the Bad River watershed, violating the band's water quality standards, E six, Romanate two H, and E six, Romanate two E. In Dr. Brand Fire and's opinion, there are no conditions that would prevent these violations of the band's water quality standards, given the nature and location of the reroute project. In summary, the hydrologic, the hydrology of the watershed was not fully understood by the applicant and the Corps in assessing its impacts. It is actually far more connected and denser and more wetland-rich. The construction best management practices on which the applicant and the EPA would have the band rely for the protection of its waters do not and cannot prevent the discharge of all pollutants into wetlands and waters that flow into the band's reservations. They're not designed to do so. The construction means and methods cause short-term, long-term, and permanent impacts to the hydrology, groundwater, surface water, and wetlands. The impacts and changes to the wetlands will cause increases in mercury and methylmercury releases into an already mercury-impaired environment. The project will violate the band's water quality standards. No conditions can be imposed that will prevent the violation of the band's water quality standards. The conclusion that no conditions can be opposed leads to only one possible outcome under the Clean Water Act. The Corps cannot issue the permit. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank the Bad River Band, their verbal statements. This hearing will now recess for lunch, and we will still return at one P M. And the remaining time will be allocated to hear verbal statements from the members of the public that you have on P M. Thank you.